Henry Quant.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Eggleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson called in, he's excused. Chester Norikis.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Alex Ward.
Here.
Are there any citizens who wish to address the agency this evening? Okay. Uh, minutes to me. You have before you minutes of the September 24th meeting. Are there any corrections or a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the agency minutes of September 24th, 2012.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, minutes are approved. Our first or special order of business is Kurt, you're up.
First off this evening is the Marview Street Improvement Project. As you remember, this was a project that came out of the Nell Scott Community Vision. We began working on it in 2006 with a series of meetings with the community to talk about the, uh, the project itself and what their expectations were and what they were trying to accomplish and their goals. And one of the things that came out immediately was whether or not that we were going to underground the utilities. They certainly wanted them underground. We explained to them that we couldn't pay for it, but we could help them put together a local improvement district if they wanted to, uh, do, try to pay for it that, without regard. Yeah, that would be great. So, we hired Group McKenzie to do the feasibility study for that, um, under grounding. And there, through that feasibility study, as I said in the staff report, there were some air pockets of support and there were some pockets that were unsupportive. And so, we can't, and then, and they voted and, and it subsequently voted, uh, they didn't get, uh, the majority of the people voted against. Majority of the property ownership voted against it because some people own more property than others. And so, the, um, they, they, they came back to us several months later and said, well, there's sure a group of us that would still like to do it. Is, is there a chance that we could look at doing it in a smaller area? And so, we went back and did a second feasibility study and that was right when the economy all kind of came crashing down and it narrowly, narrowly failed again when they, uh, brought it up for vote. So, we had, we then had answered that question of whether or not we were going to underground and, uh, we weren't. So, then we, then we could move on to conceptual design. So, again, we hired Group McKenzie to come back and work with the community on doing a concept just to see if there was some consensus amongst the community for some kind of a design for a street improvement project on that street. Because out of the, um, the community vision, you know, those tend to, um, be grandiose projects of, you know, everything you can think of, let's try to fit into a project. And then when you get down to the design stuff, you have to kind of give this away and you have to add that and you give this away and you change that and figure out if there's something that people can believe in. So, Group McKenzie helped us through that process and these are a couple of the pictures that came out of that process. You can see that we're trying to address three things. We're trying to slow the traffic down on the street because, as you know, it's, it's incredibly wide. It's almost as wide as Highway 101. It had, and it, whenever the traffic is bad on Highway 101, we all use that street and so does everybody else. And, so slowing the traffic down and then organizing the parking in some way that made sense down there and then, um, doing some, uh, street beautification things and addressing some storm drainage problems they have in the area and that sort of thing. See if we can get some pedestrian walkways so that people don't have to walk in the streets. So, those are sort of the goals of the, of the project. And, and we came up with this concept that the, uh, the Nell Scott Neighborhood, we're really fortunate that there is a Nell Scott Neighborhood Association on this project. They're doing the meetings and polling the people and getting the word out. So, it's been, uh, really, um, much easier for us in that regard. So, they came forth and said that they had polled the, uh, the residents and, and there was virtually, um, a hundred percent support. I believe, it seemed like there was a couple of people that didn't vote or, and maybe one that was against it. So, in our world, that's, that's pretty good consensus and so, then it sat. We told them that we were doing the 15th Street project and there just wasn't any way that we could afford another major project for a couple of years. And so, it sort of sat. And as you know, then at, uh, your, um, June 11th meeting, decided to move this thing forward in the budget and so that's where we are today. So, we're looking at, uh, awarding a follow-up contract with Group McKenzie to, uh, continue working with the community and, um, developing the, uh, the final design for this project. And I think that's where we're at and if, I'm glad to answer any questions and then the, the action for this would be to pass a resolution, um, coming up later in the meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
On the parking, is that, uh, perpendicular parking, uh, etched in concrete or can diagonal parking be considered?
It's not etched in concrete. However, it went through an extensive process with the community. So, it, if the community decided, hey, you know, diagonal might fit them better, we could look at it. The issue becomes that that works best then with one-way traffic and/or backing in and out and it kind of complicates things a little bit. We looked at it. It was one of the options that was discussed, but, uh, when the final analysis, they said, you know, it's, it would be better just to have a head-in parking. The, the street was wide enough for it. It didn't matter. Um, you didn't get any more parking or, it didn't, usually you do diagonal parking in order to be able to reduce the amount of space you have to back up. So, for head-in parking, you need as much park, you need, you need as much room to back up as you need for the parking space and in diagonal parking, you don't need as much to back up.
Good. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair. Curtis, is, uh, we, we're looking to, uh, tonight approve the hiring of McKenzie who will design this project or will, there's my question, actually make working drawings that construction will come off of? Cause I'm trying to understand that these are concept drawings here and were done through some kind of level of participation. So, is there another step before you actually get to working construction drawings? And, and that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out what we're, and it kind of goes with the question, um, asked, um, is this stuff that we're seeing, you know, in concrete or, or is there still, when they start putting lead to paper, they'll find things that they've got to change and?
Well, there, there's always going to be changes. My, my thinking is that they would be minor changes that, that relate to where driveways are and where, if it's going to be landscaping or if it's in a little wider parking space, those sorts of things. I think that in the, in the, um, the way that these normally take place, we wouldn't have broken up into doing a concept and then doing the final drawings. We would just awarded the same thing. They would have gone through a concept, got everybody's buy-in and said, okay, now we're going to do the, the engineering and design. And that's why you really see that the, the award here is, uh, $39,000. I mean, that's, that's very reasonable for this because all they're doing is, we're going to now do the final drawings. We're not going to go back through the process. And, uh, that's, that second phase that you're talking about, probably, we feel like it took place about a month ago at their, uh, annual meeting. They brought it back to them and said, okay, the city's ready to move for, the Urban Renewal Agency is ready to move forward on this project. Uh, any, any issues out there? And everybody said, no, we're still good with the design and moving forward.
Chair, then what I'm, I'm real concerned about is where, um, the bike and pedestrian plan that's, we're looking at in city council, you know, gets reflected into this design. And, you know, I know this one's ahead of that, uh, but I want to make sure that there's, you, whatever ideas are incorporated into that bike and pedestrian plan for Anchor and Marview is reflective here.
That's a, that's a good thought. And I think that, that we can do that within the scope of this project because it is something that's just coming out right now, that they didn't have that available.
Right. At, at that time, that's why I was concerned if there's still time to make some kind of changes.
The pedestrian thing isn't going to be an issue because that's what this is all about, is providing pedestrian pathways. Uh, it's the, whether or not you're going to put bike lanes on it, but with the parking all on one side of the street, it's, it's a stripe, yeah.
Then my final one, again, reading, um, the, a lot of the work was done in 2008 and especially regarding the underground wiring and stuff. Is there, is it much work or to check base one last time since this is 2012, 2013 to see if owners have changed, attitudes have changed, the economy's coming back, um, where they're, you know, kind of a, a last effort to, if you want them underground? Cause this is where, you, I, I think in this area, the electric, the wiring goes out and electricity goes out. I, I was just thinking if it's not too much trouble to one last kind of quick check if, if they could.
We, we certainly could. The, I think that since it's been a few years, we'd have to have the studies sort of, they have to renew it, do the numbers.
Update for cost.
They wouldn't have to go through the whole thing again, but they'd, whatever multiplier they were using, they'd have to change that. So, that, that's not an extensive thing. And then going back out to them. So, it would, it would probably delay it just a little bit if, if the answer was no and it would probably delay it a while, uh, much longer, a little more if, if the answer was, was yes.
Because of the time required for that, putting together that LID?
Yeah, putting it, well, putting it together and putting it out to a vote, yeah. And then, then putting together the LID, uh, but, you know, we're not talking a, probably more than a year or more, maybe less than that. Maybe it's, maybe it's something, I hadn't really thought about it, so, but it could be done.
I guess, you know, I'm, I'm not assuming that people would jump up and want to pay for it, but I, I guess four years later, I'm kind of looking, saying, well, you know, before we break ground, it'd be a good kind of check if it doesn't take too much, I guess.
Well, I mean, that, we could, it wouldn't take much to just find out whether people have changed their minds, would it? I mean, we wouldn't necessarily need a new cost to say, assuming that the cost is 10% higher or something, would, would you have?
That makes, that makes sense.
Just a simple letter and, or if we have emails, I don't know, but, um...
Okay.
But if, if the answer was yes, um, we've changed our minds, we want to do it, then we'd go through the LID process, but this design would not work. So, we would not want to proceed with the design because you'd want to package all the improvements together as one contract.
That's true, yeah. We would start over on this, for sure. And there's, and there, and there would be those vaults and stuff, instead of landscaping, hopefully we could put them where it shows landscaping now instead of, uh, the landscaping, you know?
I don't know.
I want to inject something in here too. I was going to bring about the birds, but the mayor, Mr. Anderson, go first, but wasn't this Marview is where someone came before us, when I first came on council, that her bird had flown into the power lines and blew out a whole bunch of refrigerators or stuff like this, was a whole bunch of things up there?
No, that was, that was on, I thought that was on 101 and 32nd, uh, a power pole at the corner. Do you remember that, Curtis?
It seems like it was in the area.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I, I think it was down, it was down that area. I'm not sure because I think it was the lady, the same lady that came before us to present this project came up and talked.
Well, I think it affected those people, but I think the actual power line, um, where the bird hit it.
Yeah, the seagull.
Well, the seagull was, was at the corner of 101 and 32nd. Cause that's where they did the repair.
Okay.
But it did affect this neighborhood, you're correct.
So, I don't know if it changes attitude of a citizen when they, you know, could get, um, you know, assuming the agency says, move ahead with the, you know, sidewalks and the, you know, the nice design and, and all this stuff and, you know, to really make it nice, you know, and Urban Renewal will pay for that, but really make it nice, here's a chance where you could, and your last chance to bury wire if you so desire. Cause, you know, when you look at the hotels and, and all the activity down there and the value, assessed value, um, it, it seems like it'd be a great time to improve your views and, uh, improve the overall.
It wouldn't take long to get a letter out with a short deadline to get back to us.
Is there a way, you know, assuming the agency wants to move ahead with the design, but subject to this, that we could take that kind of action so it doesn't have to come back?
Well...
Or could keep moving?
I'm not sure that this engineering contractor is, um, experienced in undergrounding utilities.
No, I, I meant, um, as far as to approve a design to McKenzie, um, say we could, assuming the agency approves that as requested tonight, um, but just delay it, delay.
Oh, okay.
Contract to give Kurt enough time to kind of check.
Yeah.
Um, and then if, if the neighborhood says no to the under grounding, then, you know, move on with McKenzie rather than waiting for another meeting, you know, of the agency is all, all I was...
Sure, sure, but, but, you know, um, I'd just as soon come back to council with that information and do a, do a public, um, here's what we found out, uh, have public have an opportunity to come in and say anything and, and we might be able to get an answer. You know, if we got a, a letter out this week and said, we need to hear by, um, 10 days or, or in a week because we don't want to hold up this project. If you have strong feelings about this, we need to, we need to know immediately. We could come back at the next meeting.
Well, I, I don't mean to delay this project. All I'm looking at is saying it, it was one last, you know, before we spend money on overlay and everything, say, you know, you had your, had your chance. Cause we, we know we're not going to do it. The agency isn't, but it'd be cheaper now, I'm assuming, than to dig it up later. Mr. Chair.
Uh, Kurt, I know Kurt was at that meeting, the annual meeting, and so was I. And my, my take on it is that they've kind of kicked that around a lot and they're pretty set on going ahead with what we're, we're showing now and I think they're, they're probably, at least my feeling is they, I doubt that they would want to approve that under grounding. Did you, did you get, take the same thing from that meeting, Kurt?
Yeah, and the other part is, when I talked about pockets of support and not, if you can imagine from 34th, 30, well, from 35th Street to the next street that goes up to Beach, 34th it would be, I guess, is all owned by one property owner. And that was a significant hit then to that one property owner. And so, that was where, although he was supportive of under grounding, there was no way he saw that he was able, going to be able to pay that, those types of fees. It wasn't just $7,000, it was $7,000 times every 50 feet of property owner. So, um, so the second time we were looking at it, we were just looking at it from there the rest of the way. So, then how much sense does it make then to underground half of the street, I guess? And, uh, that's, uh, kind of what's going through my head.
Mr. Chair. Yes. Mr. Hawker, if the residents were to say yes, um, I get the sense that we would then have to go to another consultant or an additional consultant?
I don't know. Because that's really different kind of work.
Yes.
It's really specialized work, under grounding.
Right.
And we might have to, or we might have to, um, have two contractors that work together. So, I mean, I, I just don't know the answer to that question. But I do know that's pretty specialized. You don't want to hire a contractor to do a design for under grounding that hasn't been there and done that.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, let's move on to the next portion, Economic Development Options.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, don't we need a, some kind of action on this?
Uh, we come up, resolutions come up next.
Okay, thank you.
The public hearing with the resolutions.
So, probably you've figured out by now that the Exhibit A that you got in your memo or your, your staff report only reflected six responses and I don't know how that happened, but I did get seven and this one reflects the seven, uh, the votes from seven people. So, I'm sorry about that, but that's the results. The, um, and it's a little much, as you can see, so I'm hoping to narrow it down for you a little bit so that it'll be easier to have some discussion. But that's how it turned out. I just wanted to be, you to be able to see that it's sort of, um, kind of everywhere. There's a lot of yeses on everything, maybes on everything, there's only a few, uh, that didn't, that had, didn't have a no. So, what I did for the, for the purpose of discussion, and I'll be able to bring this back if you'd rather see it like this, but I was just going to try to help you evaluate the results. I took and I, uh, grade out all of the ones that had three or more no votes. So, I figured that's probably a good place to start. These had three or more no votes, so let's not consider those for right now. Then in this slide, I, I highlighted the ones that had six or seven, six or more yes or maybe votes. So, those are the ones that you see that, that had the most, uh, support in the responses. So, again, I'll go ahead and gray out the rest of those again so that you can just focus on the ones that were, that had the most support. And then, if you look at those, you see that the, there's, the top two tend to have the most yeses and then the one that midway, which is luckily our program that we have now. Thank you all for voting for that one. Uh, and so, if you, if we take and, so look, that's the ones that have, uh, that have six yeses and, and if you take the ones that have, uh, those are the three that don't have a no. But then I just went one step further and said, okay, these are the ones that don't have a no, but have six or more yeses. So, that seems like a good place to start the discussion. This is, this is the one that we have. These are the ones we probably will want to consider. And then we've got four here that seem, tend to have, uh, quite a bit of support and then for you to discuss and see whether or not there's anything there that you might want to, uh, to explore as well. And, um, I think that was what I had to say and I'm open and interested in hearing your discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Kurt, what's the total amount of money that we've got for these, you know, combined projects?
Well, in this year's budget, it's about $700,000.
Anyones have any comments?
Except for the program that we have now and there's another additional $400,000 for that particular program.
Additional $100,000?
Yeah.
Any comments from anyone?
So, the, um, what, what would you recommend the next steps to be then focusing on the, we took care of the building rehab loan last meeting. That's in play and we expanded it and...
And we're getting, and I'll be bringing back a, a draft of the new plan.
And, and as I recall, we had some things in there, we, you were able to sort through, uh, cause I, I noted like the sign change out. Didn't get good rating on here, but we were able to put it in there to kind of expand.
Right. And the difference is that this was a grant and the other was a loan program.
Gotcha.
So, I assumed that was where, I don't think there was much support. There was three or four grant programs in here and they didn't have much support.
Anything, okay.
Well, if that's your question, that, my recommendation might be that, that we move forward with the, the top two and, and start and put together a program that you could look at and see if you want to modify it or if it would address the need. The energy efficiency loan thing would be really easy to put together. I mean, it's no really different than the facade program. It could just be the same, it could be rolled into that program or something similar. The business startup one, that's going to be a little trickier to put together. In my, in my thinking, I'm not exactly sure how the, the collateral thing works with a business startup. It's not like our other program where we're, we're, we become part of the mortgage, you know, we're, we're one of the lenders. There, I don't know how you, how you get collateral on a business startup, especially with business startup that's coming to you just for money to start up. So, there, that might be a little trickier to put together. The one below it, the vacant space leasing, I think it's sort of the same way. I mean, there's, when you really think about how you target, I mean, the only way this works really, I guess, is to target business, buildings that are vacant for a certain period of time, that are notoriously vacant, that you don't want vacant, but there might be a reason why they're vacant and is, are those ones you want to, um, have people, you know, subsidize people to move into? So, that one would be a little tricky. The local program support, I think, would be very easy to put together. I think we're talking about working with the Small Business Administration, maybe the Chamber of Commerce, the Lincoln County Economic Development, uh, Alliance. They have programs out there that target our city and that we might be able to just easily, uh, provide some, uh, some support funding to help program that already exists in our community. So, that would be some thoughts I would have.
Mr. Chair. Kurt, you mentioned the, uh, the, um, supporting local programs. What impact have you seen those local programs having on the local economy?
Well, I know that a, a lot of this, I hear often about success stories that come through the Small Business Development Center. And I, I talk to people all the time that are going through their, their classes or, or their assistance with, um, experts that, you know, can help people that are starting their businesses. So, that's one that I think is, um, I, I hear about. The Lincoln County, um, Economic Development Alliance, they get funding periodically from different places and it's usually earmarked for someplace or for a certain type of business or a certain number of employees. And we've, we've been able to, um, use those funds in the past. I can think of at least one example. And I know that they, that, um, the director of that organization is always trying to look for stuff in Lincoln City because it, it tends to get used more in other parts of the county. So, she's, um, she always is looking for some way to help support our area. So, if there were, there was funding and it was earmarked for our area, that would be one way to get it out there through the stuff that she's involved with. And then I just threw out the Chamber of Commerce because they, they do have an Economic Development Committee and perhaps if there was, um, some funding available, they could come up with some great ideas that would help, um, businesses that they're more familiar with helping.
Is it out of the realm to keep this list, um, and try to flush out maybe next step on, on these seven or six, cause one's already done? And let us keep taking a look at it, cause like you're saying, some of them may be way out of our realm because we can't either get a collateral or, or something. But, uh, I guess my question is more on prioritization of all the other things going on. Is it better to try to hone in on three of these or take a next swag at six of them?
I think that was where I was coming from was if, if we could, um, concentrate on two or three of them at this point and then the other ones, keep them on the list to consider and then we could work on them through the year, through the rest of the next, this coming year and get some, start pulling in information from other programs that are similar and, and then maybe, um, next year, look at which ones we might want to roll out for the, for the following year.
That sounds reasonable.
Sure. Kurt, could you email that, uh, list out to us, the revised list so that we can have that?
Sure. This, the one you see here?
Yes.
Okay. I will do that.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
So, are you looking for opinion as the top two or three or would you leave the check marks to be the top two or three?
Um, yeah, I'm interested in discussion of which ones you'd like to see.
See, I, I would have tendency to nix the housing, mixed-use housing. Um, not that I'm a fan of housing and that it doesn't, does, it does have impact. Um, but the others seem to be a little more connected types of loans and types of initiatives versus we've been doing some things, um, on the housing front. So, if I, you know, so that slowly gets me down to five.
Chair.
Yes.
Was Dick through?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I'm just trying to...
I, I would be happy to go with the, uh, mixed-use housing loan and the building ex... I mean, $700,000 is going to go fast, and with those two programs that I just mentioned. And rather than just spread a bunch of money at a whole bunch of things and not have much impact, I would rather have a larger impact on fewer programs, where I'm coming from.
Kurt, I have reservations about the business startup loan, us trying to decide appropriate businesses to help start up. I don't believe that we're in the business of starting up businesses. And I feel the same way about that vacant space leasing that you raised, the reservations that you had, and I think those are very valid. But I could certainly support the local program support, and the business expansion loan, and the energy efficiency loan.
I'd be comfortable with those three. They seem relatively safe at this point to get our feet wet.
Yeah, I agree.
So Kurt, what did you take as a consensus out of that?
Okay, so if this is, if, what I heard was, let's look at putting together a business expansion loan program, let's look at doing, offering energy efficiency loans, and continue our rehabilitation loan program, and come up with a program for that, for local program support. We'll keep the rest of them in the mix, and we'll gather information on them over the course of the next year, and then next year we'll come back and look at the list again, and see if we want to expand any of these programs, or add any to it.
Do we have a general consensus among the agency members?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you, Kurt.
Great, thank you.
And we don't have a public hearing, next thing is a resolution? Yeah. May I have a motion to approve Resolution Urban Renewal Number 2012-03, a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency approving a contract with Group McKenzie for engineering and design services related to the Marview Street improver project?
I'll make the motion to approve, so we can have some more discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second?
I guess, from our earlier discussion on this, it's not clear to me whether it's worth pursuing to remove off the table the undergrounding wire. Yeah, I heard Mr. Sprague's comments, and Kurt's from being at the homeowners' or association I'd love to hear them, the owners, say no, because there would be nothing worse for us than to, you know, a week after we've started the design program, we start hearing that had we only been asked, we would have been willing to pay, or somebody would have been willing to pay for the underground. And knowing that it might take a different design, design team and everything else, I'd hate to move ahead with this unless we get that element off the table, because, as you recall, they were pretty vocal to get this on the work schedule, and be one of the projects. And I, we heard, at least I heard even on the ODOT, open houses, when we're talking about Nelscott, the undergrounding, you know, keeps coming up, wires in the area, all this kind of stuff, so I'm, but I personally would like to make sure that I hear them, this association, telling me, no, we're not going to pay for it. So with that, I'd be voting no for this, just to, in hopes to make the move to get them to take some action.
I have to agree with you, Mr. Mc... You know, lots have changed since 2008, as a small business owner, I can attest to that, for sure. Who knows?
Yeah, and it may not, I'm...
I mean, those were dark times.
Yeah, they were, as you were going into, yeah, 2008 was not a pretty safe.
Any more discussion? If not, have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Norikis?
No.
Quant?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Ward?
No.
And Eggleton?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, would a motion be appropriate, or just direction of staff? Could we do it with direction of staff to peruse the neighborhood association, or get some kind of formal response from them?
Yeah, we'll figure out what's appropriate, and we'll get together with Nelscott Neighborhood Association, and we'll get the information back to you as soon as we can.
And I'd be ready to relook at this once we have that answer, in order not to delay moving ahead.
Yeah, I think if the answer's no, we can move forward at the next meeting.
That'd be great.
And if the answer's yes, then we're probably a month out, or so.
Great.
Okay, next item on agenda is, are there any final comments from agency members? Comments? This meeting is adjourned.
Sir?
Shorter and shorter.